All right, so I'd like to officially open the Select Board meeting of December 28th, 2023, beginning with the executive session at 6:30 PM, and I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read the executive session agenda, please.
Good evening. Item number one is to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation. If the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board in the town, and the chair does so declare to discuss the matter of Five Star Building Four versus the Town of Sherburne pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus DKM 449 Mass. 444, 2007, the Town Library. Item number two is discussion regarding collective bargaining strategy for negotiation with AFME Council 93, Local 335, the DPW bargaining unit pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus DKM 449 Mass. 444, 2007.
Thank you, Diane. Are there any changes to the agenda? All right, I do so declare that these two items could be detriment, have a detrimental effect, and therefore we should discuss them in executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Roll call, Eric.
Aye.
Steven.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I am aye as well, so please turn the re, I'm not seeing. But let everyone in.
I don't see anybody waiting.
Well, there's Margot, a few people.
Oh, you know what? I'm not a host anymore, so maybe. Yeah. Jeff, we have a 7:15 public hearing.
Yeah, so we'll have to do that right at that time, so we can start on some of the other ones that are quick.
Right.
But let's start, I would like to now open the Sherburne Select Board Open Session on December 28th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, and ask Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Select will convoke to amend or approve the agenda. We don't have a public comment tonight, but we do have a public service announcement that Jeff will be making on behalf of the Sherburne Community Center. Items may be taken out of order, and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. At 7:15, we have a public hearing, which is a transfer of license for beer and wine license for Sherburne Fuel LLC. Item number one is consideration of various licenses and permits, the ABCC license, common vic license, Class II license, and stable license. Item number two was a request from Heritage of Sherburne for a New Year's Eve extension to operate until 1:00 AM. Item three is a discussion of the Town Administrator 360 review. Jen Thompson and Blythe Robinson will be here from Capital Strategic Solutions. Item number four is an invitation from Pine Hill School to meet with the third graders. Molly Custodial will be here tonight to talk to the Select Board of what that entails. Item number five is a consideration of submitting claims on the Aquius Film Forming Foam Product Liability Litigation. PFAS manufactures 3M, DuPont, and Chemours. Sherburne Town Offices, Police, and the Library, Woodhaven Elder Housing, and Laverne Farms. Item number six is consideration of voting the town calendar and annual town meeting date of April 23rd, 2024, and April 25th, 2024, second night if needed. Item number seven is discussion regarding Select Board budget reviews. Item number eight is a Select Board reports and TA reports. Item number nine is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant, a consideration of one-day liquor license for the Sherburne Community Center, and the next meeting scheduled for the Select Board is January 11th, 2024.
So, could I? Jeff?
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
I'd like to add, like, an item right at the start, I wanted to have the board take a minute and thank the DPW, and police, and fire, and Jeremy for the storm response. We had a pretty bad storm, and I know a lot of people were without power, but it was a terrible storm, and our, our people were there putting their efforts to bring everybody back online, and you got the utilities working. So I thought, could we start off with a little bit of?
Yeah.
And thanks.
Well, let's approve the agenda, and then you can do that first. I would add to your list when you do it, the COA also, because they helped a lot of seniors in town that were stranded.
Great.
So, are there any other, so we'll add that as the agenda, item zero, I guess, or whatever, before the license and permits. Is there any other items or revisions, suggested revisions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to take a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Paul with the one addition.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well, so I think what I, I'll do is I'll let you go first, Paul, then I'll do the public service announcement after that.
Okay. Again, I just wanted to thank the DPW, the police, the fire, the Council on Aging, the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, and all town officials who helped with the storm that had so devastated Eastern Massachusetts. We were pretty hard hit. I got many reports from Jeremy on a regular basis as to how we were progressing. They appreciated that. And we survived, and the town, through the work of all these departments and individuals, came through ahead of other communities. So we did well, and wanted to give thanks and recognition to all of those.
Well said, Paul, and thanks from the entire Select Board, it really was phenomenal. Much worse than I think people realize, too, you know, with so many roads that were shut down, including major roads. It was a pretty big deal, so. That's very, very well said, Paul. So now I'm going to read a public service announcement on behalf of the Sherburne Community Center Foundation. So their, their hosting is, I don't know if they've done this before, but it's a great idea, I think. It's called a gathering of local nonprofit organizations, and this could be on Thursday, January 11th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and obviously at the, at the 1858 Townhouse. And there are a total of 35 local nonprofit organizations who are coming to share ideas, highlight missions, and brief basically all the residents of the town on what, what they offer, and hopefully, I think, get some additional contributions and funding support for their organizations, but it's, I have, it's, I have a whole list of organizations, it's, it's all the ones you can think of in town. So I think it's a great idea, because I think there's a lot of great things there that people don't know that much about, the residents, so they, if they don't contribute, they might actually be volunteer for one of the organizations also. So that's what they're doing on the 11th of January at 7:00 PM. Marion?
Right, I think it's really a shame that we're meeting at exactly that time, because
Wondering that, yeah.
It would be, it would be great if the Select Board could have a presence there. I mean, it's a place where
Kind of a charity organization, too, aren't we?
Right, well, we are, but you know, it's a place where kind of interest in volunteerism, and it's kind of a cheerleading session for everyone who's volunteering, but it's also informational for people who want to just come and see what all these organizations are. So it would be great if we could be there, but I guess we can't, so.
I mean, we could look at our agenda, if we don't have, like, major things, maybe one of us could attend, and we would just have a four-person board meeting that night if there's no really controversial things. But I don't think we want to mess up our two-week schedule for it, no.
What time, what time is the charity thing?
It's exactly coincide, 7:00 to 9:00 PM on the 11th of January.
Okay, okay, I thought maybe it was like till 7:30 or something, we had to let it, we start later or something.
I don't know, they didn't reach out to us before they picked the date, so they probably won't get any ConCon people either if they're meeting that night, too, so. All right, so it's, right now it's 7:08, so I have seven minutes. Jeannie, do you think we could do item one, considerations to license and permits? I know there's a lot of horses in town, but can we do that in a few minutes?
I think you can get them all done, they all, you should have received the memo that the inspectors went out, they inspected everything, there was nothing that would hold up any of the renewals.
So can I make a motion?
Yes, Paul.
That we approve the license renewals as listed in the I was going to say in the agenda, but they're not, they're not individually listed in the agenda.
They're, they're in the packet, though.
Yeah, they're in the pack. But I don't want to spend 15 minutes reading.
No.
I'm trying to find a way to describe them all.
Yeah.
I agree with Paul. If he wants to make a motion, I would second it, and I would only add that I think people should know the population of horses in this town is pretty.
I love, that's my favorite part of it, actually.
There's 13 stable licenses that are, that will be issued.
Yep.
What's the total horse count?
Oh, you're asking a lot tonight, a lot.
Never, never mind, it's a lot.
Well, there, I think it's also, they may not have that many, they're licensed for a certain number of horses, but that doesn't mean they have that many right now.
That's true.
There, usually the animal inspector goes out and she confirms that what they, their license for is what they have, so, yeah.
So it's a good
I'm surprised it's only 13, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Some of them are big, some of them are 50 horses or so.
Well, how many horses do you have to have to need a license? You don't have to have
More than four.
Right, so there's plenty of smaller.
Smaller ones, too, good point.
Labels.
All right, so I think we had a motion and a second, so let's vote on approving all of the different ABCC licenses, common vic, sure, class II, and stable licenses. So Eric?
So you're looking for a second, or you're looking for a vote?
No, I think, I think Paul made the motion in a way, and Marion seconded it already, so I'm just
I vote aye. Okay.
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well.
Two, 258.
There is a form.
Wow, thank you, Steven.
There's a form that has to go back when we send in the renewals for the ABCC. I just need three of you to sign it, so I should have had Marion and Steve sign it today, but we were trying to get something else done, so if anybody can
Morning to sign.
Okay, I'll bring it in tomorrow morning.
Is anyone else able to sign in the morning?
It can, it can wait till next week, it doesn't have to be tomorrow.
Okay, I should be able to stop by tomorrow, okay.
All right. All right, so we got a couple more minutes, let's see if we can do, I don't think it'd be extensive discussion, and the Heritage has a request for a New Year's Eve extension to 1:00 AM on that one night.
We'll approve, I voted this in the past, I think the boards voted this in the past.
I think so.
Yeah.
It's part of supporting our local businesses.
All right, so let's, a roll call vote, Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well, excellent, and I'd like to get in before we go to the hearing, we've got I'm going to take one item out of our, Marlene at Castillo is sitting here, and I don't want to have to make your weight through all the things. I went up to Pine Hill and sat in the third-grade classroom in the little tiny chairs, and my knees on my chin, and I'm not very big, as you know. And so it's really an exciting thing, so I think it's a great idea that they had, so, and I think you had four sections of third grade last year, didn't you, and you have only three this year?
Yes.
But will you describe for them what your vision is?
Yes, so thank you for putting us on the agenda. My other two third-grade teachers are unable to make it tonight, so my name is Marlene Custodial, I'm one of the third-grade teachers at Pine Hill, and I've been in third grade for two years now, whereas I was in second grade for many years. And what we're doing is looking at the Massachusetts State Curriculum Frameworks, and what they have is a category of civics, and that I did forward a little information to you just so you would know in depth what it is, but basically, we in the third grade teach our students about civic knowledge, and to understand the purpose of government, and the different degrees of the levels of government from our local towns right up to the state. So last year, what we did was we tried to coordinate you guys in here some way, somehow, and it just didn't come to be. But what our third graders did do last year was the school committee did come and talk about what their roles are as a school committee in our town, and then we took our third graders to the State House, where they were able to tour the State House, they were able to sit in the chambers, and they were all able to meet Representative Linsky at that time, and unfortunately, the governor was out of the building, but the kids had the unique opportunity to go into the governor's office, and they say they don't do that too often. One of our classes actually got to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at one of the chamber meetings, and it was very unexpected. And when I was there, our group got to go out on the balcony of the State House, which they say not many people get to do that either. So we're well-received at the state level, so what we want to do this year is we already have the school committee arranged to come in in January to speak about the roles they play. What we want to do with you is to invite three individuals or more, we have three classes, we would want one individual to visit each class separately, not as a whole group, for about 45 minutes, and discuss what your role is in the Town of Sherburne. You know, why have you chosen to be a Select Board member, and what jobs do you have to do, and how important is the Select Board in our town, and have our kids really understand what government is and how it works at the level in Sherburne, and make that connection from myself as a teacher, to a principal, to a school committee, to select boards, and all the way up to the, the governor, in which we will revisit the state cap, the state capital, we will go to the State House, excuse me, in April, is the intention, that we will go there in April, so that they can put this all together. So what we were looking for is a date in February, and again, it can be one person that wants to visit three classes, or three people, and each person take a class, no more than 45 minutes. We do not think that our kids can really digest much more than what 45 minutes can offer them. We're more than happy to supply a series of questions, guideline questions for you ahead of time, so that you know what we're looking for, and that gives a good sense of, I think, what we're looking for, primarily, we're looking for February. There's, you know, February vacation is the only time we're not available. We were primarily looking for a Monday, Tuesday, or possibly Wednesday. And we would like to invite you in.
I think we'll, offline, we'll coordinate with Diane Moore's Assistant Town Administrator help on, on doing. I think my recommendation is that we have three different Select Board members go, just to give a little variety. Is that, anyone on the Select Board have any comment that they want to make?
Yeah, I would, I would be happy to do it. Obviously, my son James was in Marlene's class when he's, he's in the room, actually, he's talking in the background, but yeah, Marlene was actually James's second-grade teacher. So I would be happy to do it, but my only restriction is that I can only do it on a Monday.
And that's fine, you know what, if we had to have one of you on a Monday, and somebody else came on a Tuesday, I don't think any of that would matter. You know, we can coordinate the date and time, as long as you have three individuals that want to work with each individual teacher, we'll just do it that way.
Great.
And I will definitely do it also, so we'll get, Diane will coordinate scheduling for us, but thank you for coming tonight, and
Sure.
I think it's really interesting, we'll probably learn more than the third graders would be, my guess, but I think it'll be fun.
It's a two-way road, you know, now we have two ways in and out of Pine Hill, so you can learn in two different directions, so.
Totally is.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it.
That's good.
Thank you, Marlene, for coming.
All right, thank you, and I'll just look forward to just talking with you later.
All right, and so we're now going to go to the public hearing, which is the transfer of the liquor license for Sherburne Fuel. Are you going to walk us through this, Jeannie, or?
Hello, my name is Alan Genapoli, I'm the attorney for Sherburne Fuel.
Okay.
We have Laura Weatherall and Alex Weatherall with us, too, on the Zoom. I don't know if to open up the public hearing before we discuss it.
Yes.
Do I have to read, is there a state, I don't know what statement I have to read, Diane, is there?
The call for the hearing.
There should be a legal
I'm sorry, my, my mistake, okay, so I'm going to read the notice of public hearing, so thank you, Attorney Genapoli.
My mistake, I was a Select Board Member in Walpole for six years, so I know the routine.
Know the routine, okay, well, okay, so I'm going to now read the notice of public hearing. The Sherburne Select Board will hold a virtual public hearing on Thursday, December 28th, 2023, at 7:15 PM, on the application of Sherburne Fuel LLC doing business at Sherburne Market. Laura M. Weatherall, trustee manager of record on the change of ownership interest, name change only, of a wine and malt license at 21 South Main Street. Information on how to access the virtual meeting will be posted on the town's website, main calendar, sherburneMA.org, and oral and written comments are invited. Okay, so is there any discussion, or did, did, did people have questions on this? Is there something you wanted to present to us, Attorney Genapoli, or?
Yeah, I think it might make it easier, this is kind of a formality that the ABCC requires. What has happened here, there's no change in the operations, there's no change in the manager of record who's going to be posted on the license, it's still going to be Laura Weatherall. Sherburne Fuel LLC is still the owner, if you will, holder of the license. What is being done is that Sherburne Fuel's assets LLC, the assets, the liquor license, is being put in the family trust. And it's just for family estate planning purposes, and the two trustees will be Laura and Alex of the trust, so it's still the same principles involved. Like I said, the same operation, no change of manager records, more of a formality as to how the structure of ownership is that the ABCC requires.
Okay, thank you.
I just, my comment is that it seems like a no-brainer, it just seems like a lot of paperwork, just to like, put something in a trust, but I dealt with that years ago, and it is a pain, and Alex is a great stakeholder in town, so I have no objection, no concern in anything, if there's no further public comment or whatever, I'd even move to brew.
But you need, this is a public hearing, so you need to call for the public now to comment.
Okay, I'll do that. Are there any public comments on this transfer of the license for Sherburne Fuel? We don't have a very large public attending this week.
I'll come, I'll make a
All right, go ahead, Paul.
I, I wanted to compliment the Weatheralls for a very nice operation that they're running in, in town here. It's a great service to the community between the gas and the convenience part of it, the bank, the ATM machine, the rustic pizza, the, the Dunkin' Donuts, it's, it's quite a busy area, and I think it enhances the, the community as a whole. The transfer of beneficial owner here is, is housekeeping. So yes, we should approve this, and I would move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second Paul's comments, and I second the motion.
All right, one more chance, anyone in the public or other town employees that has any input? All right, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote, Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Thank, thank you Weatheralls and Attorney Genapoli for coming tonight.
Thank you all so much, and Happy New Year to you all.
Thank, thank you very much, and for your kind comments.
We, we wish we had more cause to get in front of the Select Board, it's, it's a pleasure.
We're not that interesting, really, you, you're doing okay.
Good night, all.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was great, so our next agenda item is the Town Administrator Review, and we have both Jen Thompson and Blythe Robinson here tonight. As you know, when we negotiated the contract with Jeremy, we included in it a 360-degree review at the end of the first year, which was completed, and so they're going to just give us a very high-level summary of, of, you know, what, what the scope was and what the results were, so I'm not sure which of you is going to lead off.
I'll start it off. Good evening, everyone, nice to see you all again, and
Do you want to share your slides, Jen, or do you want us to do it?
I can do it, I think, if I have
Yeah, you're good, you have permission if you want to.
Perfect. So I'm, I'll, I'll just talk a little bit about the process, and then I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, Blythe, who performed the review with me and really did the bulk of the interview, so I'd like her to kind of do the high-level overview of the results, but just to talk about the process a little bit. As you mentioned, we were asked to assist the town with the 360 performance review that was part of Mr. Marsette's contract about a year into his position as Town Administrator. And for folks that are watching and don't know what a 360 review is, it's a little bit different than a standard or typical performance review that many folks are used to, where your supervisor creates a review of your performance, sometimes you have the ability to comment, and then sometimes you set some goals, but it's really just your supervisor typically performing the review. And a 360 review, it's meant to be a lot more comprehensive and holistic, so it involves feedback from multiple sources and perspectives, which I believe the board felt was important in Sherburne, which is an interesting and very good approach for a town, because there's so many folks that are impacted by the Town Administrator and their position, and, and I think it's especially important, the first year, with the goal of setting the Town Administrator up for future goals and professional growth. So the 360 review involves obtaining feedback, like I said, of your supervisors, so, so the board, but also of employees that work for the Town Administrator, so subordinates. Those were done in a confidential manner, so we don't use names, we try to keep things as general as possible to make sure that people are comfortable giving their honest assessment and answers to the questions. We also do stakeholder assessments, so individuals that interact with Mr. Marsette but don't necessarily report to him, so those could be folks that are employees that report to a board, or members of other boards. We interviewed some of the chairs of some of your boards and committees that interact with Mr. Marsette. The other part of the assessment is, Mr. Marsette did a self-assessment, so the same questions that were asked throughout the assessment of the participants were also asked of him to get his viewpoint on how he thought he had done his first year, and for him to be able to self-reflect and look back on his own performance. And then finally, that, all of that information is compiled into a final report, and tonight, we'll, we're going to just do a quick summary and executive overview of that report. In total, there were 21 participants that, that were interviewed, and in, in addition to the self-assessment that Mr. Marsette did. Again, the main goals here were to collect and receive constructive feedback. The board was very clear that the purpose of this was to get constructive feedback from Mr. Marsette, and also set up both him and the town for improvements and professional growth in the coming years. And I'll hand it over to Blythe to go over the results.
Hi, everyone, thank you for having us in tonight, and thank you for doing this process. It's not one we see very typically in communities, and it really tells me, I think, tells all the people that participate in this, that you care as a board about this position, this person, and how that person is interacting with your organization, becoming part of it. So thank you for that, because it's not something typically done, and I wish it happened more. And I also wanted to give a thanks to the people who participated, and everybody filled out this questionnaire before they talked with either Jen or I, or a couple times, both of us, but then also spent time with us, bringing to life But then also spent time with us, bringing to life, you know, the answers that they gave and giving us examples that really helped us formulate this report. They really seemed pleased to be involved and asked. And again, I think that speaks volumes. And so overall, from the review, I, I think the first bullet that Jen has here really sets the tone for what, you know, we're gonna talk about, which is the majority of people believe that you made a good choice in hiring him. He came to you with, you know, you know, experiences as a public works director, but not a town administrator. But he, you know, one person described him as a municipal nerd that he, you know, has taken time over his career to learn all, all the things, you know, that, that go into being a town minister that, you know, he wouldn't necessarily have needed to know as a public works director. And he served his own, serves his own community. So he's learned some of these financial skills and, and important things doing that on the side. And they're pleased that he's there. They described him, and you see the bullets on the screen, screen, trustworthy, reliable, intelligent, approachable, friendly, welcoming, has a consistent open door policy. You know, Sherborne had a period of, I think, two years where you didn't have somebody, you know, in that role or not in, in the way you wanted that to be. And so, you know, he had, that's interesting dilemma for a new manager to come in and, and have to learn the organization and meet all the people and figure everybody out and deal with issues that maybe hadn't been dealt with. And so people really appreciate that he has done that. And they noted things that he's done that are, that they found helpful, like having regular department head meetings again, putting together an organization chart that I guess had never been done before, public outreach or things that got mentioned. So overall, people are pleased. But I also would note that this was a, a pool of twenty one people. And so if there were people who rated him a little lower in some categories, most of the time, those people said to me, we realized that he had a lot to learn and get under his belt in a year. And so we think that, you know, if you ask me this question six months or a year from now, I'm gonna rate him higher because I fully expect he's going to be even better than he is today. So this is some points I wanted to make. Jen, can you go to the next slide, please? So then, as Jen mentioned, we asked Jeremy the same questions. And he sees himself very similarly. He thinks he's proactive. He thinks he really tries to communicate and listen to people, especially welcoming them into his office and coaching them when things come up or when they're in new roles. I understand you have a couple of people who are new to your organization and, and, you know, benefit from having somebody they can go to, to get some support about what they're doing and how they're approaching their role, even if they don't report to him directly. And they, and he thinks that his experience has really helped him provide some leadership and deal with some issues. For instance, the setting up the water and sewer district. That knowledge of finance and public works and those relationships of the towns that you're working with made a difference probably in that happening. What was interesting was that Jeremy scored himself across the board a little higher than people in, in the individuals did. And I think that was a little bit concerning for him when we talked about, Jen and I talked with him about yesterday. I actually told him I didn't think it was negative. I thought it, to me, it told me that he really understands and thinks it's important to be, being the communicator and the coach and the community leader that you want him to be. And he's really trying to achieve that and he cares deeply about it. But that the three sixty assessment really is valuable because if there are a couple of people here or there that didn't see him quite that way, it's helpful for him to understand that, so that those are the things that he can, you know, work on and be aware of. And, and I think slowly over time, change how he approaches some situations to, to improve even further. So I say that's a, it's a great list that Jen's put together of the things that we learned from him. And then turning to the, you know, the strengths again. I, I'm gonna repeat myself a little bit, but they're all really, they're really positive things. Civic minded jumped out at me. I mean, it's, it's sometimes hard to be on top of everything that's happening in the community, in your departments, in the day-to-day work that has to get done, but still out there in the community, going to meetings that maybe you're not required to go to and becoming part of the community over time. Jen, you wanna go to the next page? And so, you know, these are the things that we heard that people would like to see him do more of. Managed by walking around came up a number of times. I think I learned from talking to Jeremy that, you know, he's probably focused a little bit more on the core departments, the, the ones that report directly to him that take up the biggest part of the budget. But that doesn't mean that the, the departments or boards that are smaller aren't, is equally important. And so even, you know, though he believes he's walking around, some maybe don't see that as much. So be aware of it. You try to get out there a little bit more. And build those relationships. And, and I say that again in the, in the second bullet, concentrate on everybody equally as you can. Utilizing involving the assistant town administrator Diane a little bit more. Several people noted her long tenure and her, you know, how, how well she understands the organization and her skills. And there may be opportunities where he can do that a little differently maybe than he has in the first year. Another one was that considering all viewpoints, there's definitely issues that come up in a community and sometimes, you know, maybe he hasn't had taken the moment to make sure he's checking in with all of the actors who may have something to, and to contribute to an issue. Or, you know, there's, some of you on the board have, you know, more history than others on topics that have come up in town. Making sure that he's touching base with some of, you know, all of you if necessary to make sure that he understands what's come before him, so that as he makes recommendations or puts out a vision, it's with the knowledge of things that he should know. And perhaps that could help him change his approach if necessary or just be more convinced it's the right one when he puts it out there and people feel like they're included. That can go a long way towards getting to yes on whatever the issue is. Some people love to see him be more decisive and direct. And that was interesting comment because, you know, in your first year, you're learning, you're maybe not changing everything that, that's come before you. Maybe there's times to be that way, maybe there are times that isn't. But that was one person's comment. Board communication, that probably every community, that can always be better. I don't care who you are as the manager. But again, people have their own perceptions of how you interact with them and some people might, would like more and some people are good. But it was something just to be pointed out because we heard it a couple of times. And then people are also very positive. You know, he started some great initiatives. Glad we have a, a upgraded website. Glad to see we're on Facebook. Glad that we're working on a budget process that will be a better way to go through that whole annual important step. Because he's taken time to think about that, work with the advisory committee. And overall, people like, yeah, it's the right fit. We're glad he's here and we're looking forward to the future. And I think there were just a couple of other little bullets that I wanted to bring up and things that we heard in the report. We just get to my comments here. Because some of them are great. You know, what would you change about him? And people are like, I wouldn't change a thing. Continue the upward trajectory of good community, town communications. I value that he's fiscally responsible and he, his integrity and his understanding the small townness of Sherborne. I, and in terms of what could he do to improve his management style? Nothing. I appreciate him. Was another comment that we heard, and some of those are direct comments, but after, after talking to twenty one people, I don't remember exactly who said what, but again, this was anonymous. So those, that's, it's a very quick overview. I don't want to take too much of your time. But Jen, I would love to take any questions that you have.
Actually, I was gonna make a, a little bit of a statement, but did Jen, did you wanna make any concluding remarks before I do?
Nope, I'm good, Jen. Thanks.
Okay, so I was gonna say three or four things here that I think are important to record. First of all, this was a great review. Jeremy's done a great job. I think we're all pleased. And so I thank him for putting up with us and it really, I think it was very effective review. So the next thing I want to say is I think one, one thing about this process that I think we might underappreciate is I believe that all of those twenty one people appreciated being asked for input.
Absolutely.
I think the thing here is that we won't always do three sixty degree reviews, but we need to find other ways to gather input that's as inclusive as it can be so that everyone feels like they're being listened to, which is, I think that was a benefit for Jeremy and the select board here, but it really caused some of the departments to, to feel noticed and their input valued. So I would like to extend that in ways in which we can. And as you probably saw, I think there's an email Jeremy is willing and, and asks, I think, would encourage if each of the individual select board members maybe want to sit down with him one-on-one afterwards and talk about the report or just sort of review the year. He's willing to do that. And I think, you know, it might be interesting if people want to do it individually rather than as a group. In terms of where we go next, I view this as not just a review of Jeremy, but a review of the select board too. So in, in my view, the next things we need to do is set sort of more specific goals for Jeremy for the next year. But concurrent with that, set goals for the select board also, so we can, you know, be held accountable and that we're working hand-in-hand with Jeremy on what we think this, with his help, the select board in the town can accomplish in the next year. So I would like to see the next, one of the next steps to be a development plan for Jeremy, which will include things for the town, but also can include things like professional development or other. I know he has a lot of ideas and a lot of experience in that. May, maybe other professional development opportunities for him. But strongly also, you know, holding our feet to the fire and finding things the select board should strive to achieve in, in the next year. And, and my final comment is that I just really want to thank Jen and Blythe. They did a fabulous job in, in running this process and making people feel comfortable because the hardest thing about these reviews, and I, I brought it up initially because I've done them a lot in my, my day job. So I've used them pretty effectively that way. So, but people can feel uncomfortable participating if they think their confidentiality won't be maintained. So the way they conducted the process and made people feel at ease with submitting written input and then offering them two or three ways, whether they wanted to Zoom input or meet in person to provide interview input really worked well, I think. So I, I think that was really a terrific, terrific service you provided to us. Thank both of you.
Thank you.
So that's my, my wrap up. Are there any other select board members that would like to weigh in?
I mean, yeah, if you say something too complimentary, it almost like takes away from the, from the, and anonymous nature of it, but I think he's been doing a great job. I've been very happy with it. I'll actually go out and, I, I think, I don't know if it's based, I think it's based on actually case law, where things, things are public. I somewhat disagree with the whole aspect, but I know what it is a law. We've gotten it's an unfortunate aspect of it to make this public. I think it's almost every individual's right to actually have a confidential just with their superior, be it one or several superiors, but it is what it is. I do not support legislation to make these things confidential, to be honest with you.
But I think that's true, although we need this at a very summary level to, to, to sort of bridge that. But yes, you're right.
No, yeah, no, I, I think we handled it very well. In fact, I'm very pleased with Jen and Blythe and the, on the approach of this and the professionalism of this as well. I'm just thinking, just taking like big, I won't go any more details of it with, you know.
Yep.
Boys, but yeah, just there are certain, yeah, whatever, it is what it is.
I'm volunteering to become municipal employees if that's what you're asking.
That's kind of it. It really is. Honestly, it really is. It's almost a disincentive. I've been very pleased. I look, and I look forward to setting the goals. I actually want to start in that right away. I have a couple of ideas.
And Marian, did you have your hand partway up? Or no?
You're muted, Marian.
You're muted though, Marian.
Yeah. I, I agree with everything Eric said, but also I think, you know, I hope that Jeremy can use this, can use this to his advantage too. I mean, I'm super happy with Jeremy. He knows it. I think he's done a phenomenal job in a first year of a job, figuring out all the personalities. And I think he, he might want to have more access not to confidentiality of who replied, but when, when we see comments like we would like this better or that better, it's good to know from where they come like in a generic way, like was that from a committee or board? Was it from a subordinate? That would be useful for Jeremy to know. We don't need to know that because I think we, we see the big picture and it's very good. But it might be useful for Jeremy to have some of that kind of generic information.
Yeah, I wouldn't support that, Marian, because that's how you get, that's how you lose the confidentiality, even if it's generic or high level. I, I wouldn't support that because it's, it has to be totally summarized and not, and not even categorized after the fact. And, and Blythe was a good person to participate because she's also had a review conducted on her as well as, as conducting them for other people. So she's, she's got the scars to prove it. Paul, you were gonna add something?
Yes, I was on the search committee for town administrator. And when, and I, and I, and I voted for Jeremy. When you do, when you go through that process, you never know for sure when you're bringing on somebody new, whether they're gonna work out. Is you think when, when I voted, I thought this was, this was the best fit for the community. But you never know for sure. And so I'm really delighted at this response and this, this evaluation. Because it says the, the I don't want to use the word gamble, but it's, it's something like a gamble. You take a gamble when you bring in somebody new. The gamble paid off. That this, this, this turned out to be a good hire. It turned out to be a good choice for the community. That's one of the comments that I see here several places. That he's a good fit for the town. And, and that's what I felt a, a year ago when we were in this process. But as I say, you never know for sure, but now I know for sure. It's worked. So I'm happy with the results.
Okay. Thanks again, Jen and Blythe. I think we're, I think we're good here.
You're welcome. Our pleasure. Thanks again for having us do it. It was great.
Great New Years.
Absolutely. Best, best wishes to all of you for the future.
All right. Thanks again.
Yep, bye.
And Jeremy, thank you for participating in in this, in the process as well. I think it would work. It was pretty productive.
Yes, thank you. It was my pleasure.
So we'll move on to the PFAS, claims for PFAS. Are you gonna lead that one, Jeremy, with Sean?
Yeah, and, and also Paul has some experience in this. So I'll also lean on Paul a little bit for some background, but there's been, there's several class action lawsuits that are underway against the producers of PFAS materials to help offset some of the costs that public water suppliers are, are facing by way of. To help offset some of the costs that public water suppliers are are facing by way of. Now having to comply with some treatment requirements and so forth. So there's, there's a couple of opportunities for the town of Sherburne with. Several of its public water supplies to fire out file claims towards these class action lawsuits. And potentially potentially recoup some of our costs. It's certainly not going to be a windfall, likely not going to cover all of the potential costs, but. We did, you know, run this by town council and and they're they're aware of this class action lawsuit. And also, you know, supportive of of this and see that. Sherburne's a pretty small fish in this this very big pond. So, you know, likely, you know, on our own would not. Be able to to file such suits to to recoup funds in in any way, so. It it's just bringing it before the board to get your your. Support for filing some claims, but with that summary, I want to just let Paul speak a little bit from his experience on the communities and. Let Sean as well chime in. He's still here.
Sure, so. I've been involved with PFAS litigation on behalf of other communities. Where. They made the choice to become a plaintiff. So we have. As a named plaintiff, we have had the opportunity to get involved in hiring the various. Councils, various experts and so on. This settlement is only one of potentially more settlements that might be coming down the road. But the class action suits are kind of the tail of the the process. So there are, there are the actual plaintiffs. Then there are. The the lawyers we picked, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Followed our lead and picked the same lawyers. So the Commonwealth is a plaintiff on behalf of. Itself and the cities and towns. So that. Their recovery, they plan to make available through the Commonwealth. To cities and towns through more of a supervised. Distribution. For purposes of assisting with with PFAS remediation. So there are three ways to recover this this. Over a billion dollars for this this settlement round. But the class action suits are kind of late to the game, so the. The time for. Filing objections. Is already passed. It ended in November. The the time for the hearing, I think, was in December. It was the initial hearing, the go ahead. And I think that that's gonna be like a final hearing in February. Once for final approval. For us to participate. Is because Sherburne is a non plaintiff. Sherburne never filed the lawsuit. So our participation is as a class member. In suits brought by other plaintiffs. Who brought it upon, brought suits for themselves and for all similarly situated communities. For the decision point for us is number one, do we opt out? And I would say strongly, do not opt out. Because if we stay in. Then we will get some money. If you opt out. That means you're gonna have to rely on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to come through. Or you have to file your lawsuit. So please do not opt out. The the second part of this is if you're going to get a recovery. In the class action suit. There has to be a factual basis. So for the. For my clients or plaintiffs, they have spent a long time developing. Damage information. For us to participate, we have to, the town of Sherburne has to undertake that. Job of putting together actual damage figures, numbers, what amount we claim to be. The damages the town has incurred. And you want to put as much in that as possible. The higher the number, the more you're going to recover. So the odds are. The recovery in the class action suits isn't going to give you a hundred cents on the dollar for the damages that you claim. But if you don't. Submit a claim. There's no damages to give you. So you have to. Do some work. And by you, I mean. The three. Classes here that we have of potential damages. Those have, we 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 need to do some documentation. And then there's a a series of of tests that you're supposed to run. In the upcoming year. To validate. Where you are on the PFAS scale. So to be a class member, you you have had that already. Had a PFAS problem with the test report. And we've had that. So that makes us eligible as as a class member. We just have now have to do our homework. So I would highly recommend we do the homework. Now, some of, some of my clients have actually hired somebody to do that for them. They brought in an outsider. Who's put together all the numbers. But I don't, I don't see from the three categories. Of potential losses. That 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 we're in that range. I mean, my other communities have spent ten million dollars for each treatment plant for each. Single well or or double well. So if you're, if you're spending ten, twenty, thirty million dollars. You're in entirely different league than than Sherburne. But we still have to deal with the PFAS issues. We still have to have treatment. There's still are costs that are being incurred and to be incurred. And so those should be documented, those should be presented. We we lose nothing by doing that and we potentially get money. So that's, that's my two cents on this.
Thank you, Paul. Eric has his hand up, but Jeremy, did you have any more points you wanted to make in summarizing before we go to discussion?
No, I think I think Paul covered it very well and. You know, certainly will will, if if the board chooses chooses to to proceed with claims, then. We'll put together, you know, our best best information available and and put it forward.
Okay.
So my question is just, um, what what is our damages right now? Like, for example, not monetary, but what is it? We got PFAS hit in the in the Woodhaven well? Just someone clarify what what our actual impact is at us.
Well, and we we've found PFAS, you know, in essentially all of the public water supplies that that are run by the town. Sherburne Town Offices, which serves in the library, the police department, the community center and town hall. The Woodhaven Elder Housing has found some level of PFAS not to trigger current mass DEP. Regulations, but potentially triggering the the future US EPA standards. And also Leland Farms. Also. See Tom Trainers on as well. He he might be able to give some context too in a broader sense, but. The Pine Hill Elementary School, which is actually under the purview of the school department. Has also found a a lower level of PFAS in their water quality testing. So you, if you choose to move forward on the municipal wells, you might. Want to urge the the school department to do do the same on Pine Hill. We could certainly support that effort as well. Happy to work with the school department in in doing that.
And that actually goes right to kind of my second question. So I had a follow up, which basically had to do it. My my fault was on both Pine Hill and the private water supply that are on in town that are the also public water supplies. Can they enter it? I mean, I think we should definitely develop a Pine Hill. I in fact, that's might actually fall into the select board if we're considered, I guess, maybe the water commissioners, wouldn't it? Either way, it surprises me that the Sioux community would have to make a separate vote than us even on something like that, but I'll leave that to other people to decide. And can something like, I don't know, if I'm a Sherman Heritage, if they've tested and they have PFAS, can they enter this on their own? That was my only other question.
That's only for water suppliers. Sorry.
Yeah, Sherman Heritage is a public water supply.
Public water suppliers.
Sherman Heritage is a public water supply. Their well serves more than twenty five people per day and defined as a public water supply under DEP. There are several privately owned public water supplies in town, all of the state, to be honest.
I think this is only for governmental. I don't think, I don't think it applies to private.
And and I think, and I think in any event, if it does apply, then, you know, they, the owner is the one that needs to prove the damages and put forward a claim, so. You know, we will. You know, I'm happy to work with Tom to 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 spread the word to the other public water suppliers in town. To to have them investigated if they're eligible to submit a claim or not.
And I'll I'll sign off. I support us entering this and I think we should wrap up Pine Hill as well. I didn't realize that they would that that they would actually be under a separate purview than us.
I'm not sure we're sure that they are, so that's a good suggestion. Marion?
I, yeah, I certainly support this. We should be, we should, we should join. But I'm wondering, does damages have to? Does damages have to be money that you've paid for mitigation? Or can it be simply what it's going to cost you to to mitigate a PFAS problem? Can it be hypothetical or does it have to be a? An actual bill? My second question is a much broader one. How broad is this class action suit? Is it only Massachusetts? Is it just a? A huge conglomerate all over the country or what what's the, what's the range, the scope?
All over the country.
Okay.
There there are multiple class actions that have been consolidated for purposes. Of management in the federal courts in South Carolina. And it includes a schedule for testing in. For dates that haven't occurred yet, so. You can still get eligibility, but what they're doing now is they're going through. Lists from the different jurisdictions, so Massachusetts DEP have given them a list of. Failed tests, basically. And they, we have a claims administrator whose job it is to look that up. And send notices to. Those people on the failed list because they're class members. So they're trying to notify all the class members. With the same notice that we received.
So each class member has to agree to join for the, for the state, for the group to be able to claim. The total amount of damage that they want to claim.
It's the other way around. If you're a class member. You have to opt out.
Oh, I see.
If you don't opt out.
You're in.
It's one point one billion dollars of funds that is going to be distributed to the class members. But how is it going to be distributed? So it depends on if there's two point two billion of claims. And one point one billion to be distributed. Then everybody who submitted the two point two billion will get fifty cents on the dollar. But if the amount of claims is. Five hundred and fifty million. And there's one point one billion. You only get the five hundred and fifty thousand. And the rest is for them to keep searching for other class members. Who are who are going to be failing tests. There there's a round of test schedule, I think, in June of twenty twenty four. And so if more people fail, there can be more claims to pick up that that extra amount.
Right, so I think you answered my first question. To be a part of this, you don't have to have done the mitigation and paid for it. You have to simply have PFAS and prove that you have it.
Yes. That gets you through the class, but that's not your damages per se.
Yeah, improve the damages or quantify the damages. All right, I think Stephen, you're next.
Um, yeah, I have several questions, but first, I guess just to follow up on Marion's last question. It, you know, for some several of our wells, including Pine Hill, I I believe that although PFAS. Has been detected, it has not exceeded the mass DEP threshold, right? So would would those wells actually qualify? For a claim of damages under this, under this lawsuit? Or does it have to? Okay, so so essentially, we we only have. What then? Maybe two wells in town that that would actually qualify at this time for for any damages?
Right, Leland. And.
And the town hall.
Town hall and maybe Woodhaven.
Yep, but is Leland and Woodhaven like they're going into a combined water supply system, right? So they're kind of the same thing. All right, so that's one. So then what? Are there ramifications for the the wells that are kind of currently almost, almost over the limit? And likely within the next couple of years may go over the limit. Are are we? Would we be unable to make a claim on any of those or is it likely that additional class action lawsuits would would come around?
Well, I think the federal limit is going to be much lower. It's going to be one quarter. I think it's five. Parts per whatever instead of twenty.
Okay, so at that point, essentially, basically all of our public wells would would get wrapped up into it. Right. And then I guess my two sort of broader questions, one would be, is there any? Is there any reason not to do this? Is there any disadvantage? To filing a claim or I suppose not? Not opting out?
So you can only recover once. That's a disadvantage. So if you recover this way. So let's say there's two point two billion of claims. There's one point one billion that's distributed. You're getting fifty cents on the dollar. Then the Commonwealth of Massachusetts gets the recovery. And then this decide, they're going to give us. X dollars to put in a whoopity doo system to take care of our problem. You've already given a release as part of the class action suit. So you're, you're out.
I see. So essentially, we're now, we would be choosing between. Being a part of the class, a class member versus opting out and waiting to see what the state gets and then. Essentially getting something from the state for essentially the same, the same lawsuit. That that's really the decision before us? Is that accurate?
Yeah, you can't recover twice.
So then are we sure that being a class member is more advantageous than waiting and sort of riding on the coattails of the state?
So the argument. That council have made about the state is. This settlement. Is a burden hand. As opposed to. What might happen with the state? This is geared toward public water suppliers. As opposed to governments that are acting in a more governmental way to take care of their subdivisions. The state. May put conditions. On any award, so they may decide to give Sherburne the same amount of money or more money, but they may say. As. Conditions. That X, Y, and Z has to happen. And those conditions may or may not be acceptable. To us.
Okay, and then the last question, you have said a couple of times that there's one point one billion dollars. But in the, in the information in the packet, I see two numbers. One of them says ten to twelve billion. I think that's for a three M. And then one of them says one point one billion and that I think is for DuPont. So is there, is there actually, are are both of those active? So. Is the actual distribution then potentially more like twelve billion dollars? Okay. Okay.
Yes, I should have said that.
Okay.
That's one, that's one class action that I'm involved with.
Okay.
But there's, there's like six different class actions. And the aggregate is yes, more than one point one.
Okay.
I was using that as an illustration.
Okay, I think that's all of my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. And now for some scientific expertise, we'll let Mr. Trainer speak. Where is he?
Thank you, um.
Tom.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I thought I'd just answer a couple of the questions came up and I might have some of my own questions remaining. Uh, in terms of in the town, you know, the groundwater protection committee's been really studying any kind of PFAS data we can get our hands on. There's fourteen mass DEP public water supply wells in the town. Four of which the town own, if you include Pine Hill. Uh, and of those fourteen, thirteen have been tested for PFAS. One of the private ones has not. And of the thirteen that have been tested for PFAS, all have had detectable levels. And actually, that, I think that brings me to my first question. I think, and this might be a question for Paul, because you raised it. I, I think the, uh, the suit that Sherborne is proposing to join, which I'm totally for, uh, is the one that's being filed in South Carolina. And I thought one of the prerogatives to be a, a member of that, uh, suit is a well with any detectable levels of PFAS, not, not above any uh regulatory limit, but just above a analytical method limit. Uh, so that, uh, I, I think that all of the town wells are above those, above those levels. But I'll end with, I, I think my real question, you know, the majority of wells in town, uh, the, the other public wells, uh, the businesses, the churches, all have these PFAS, particularly the ones downtown. Uh, and a high percentage of private wells are coming up with detectable levels of PFAS. Can, can any of those individuals, either a business or a nonprofit church or a, uh, a private resident avail themselves of these large lawsuits?
I don't know the answer to that. We may have.
I don't know the specifics, but I, I believe these, these current class actions, the class um, is our public water suppliers. So, um, you know, residential homes, serving a single family home, we're not part of that class from my understanding. Um, could some of the other, you know, public water suppliers that are not public entities file? Um, I, I don't know the answer to that, but um, I'm happy to look into, into further, Tom. And we, we could spread the word if, if they are.
Good, well, let's, let's talk. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other raised hands. Um, so do we need to, it says consideration of so many claims. Do we need to vote on this now, Paul? Is that your sense?
Yes, I'm, I'm suggesting you don't opt out of this class, because I think there's a net net advantage. And I think you do pursue whatever claims we can get, because it's, it's found money. Uh, and again, the legal fees are going to get deducted before the distribution. So we're not going to ourselves incur any legal fees
Yep.
on this. So it's, it's just going to be a check that's going to come in.
Yep.
But a, a lot of the talk is not to have it be a lump sum all at once, but to pay a little bit each year. So that it might be a five-year or ten-year period, you get regular checks.
Yep.
Uh, and just with regard to the point that, that Tom was making. Yes, there are statements in there. To be a class member, you, you have to have any detectable. But in order to recover, you have to have violated some standard somewhere. That can be state or, or, or local or, or federal. But then there needs to be some, something to, uh, to trigger the, the actual award of, of, of money. And the EPA is in the process of, of determining what that standard should be. And as already indicated, it's going to be pretty low. So I think it's, it's a moot point. And there are so many class actions, I can't keep track of them all. I'm sure this class actions on behalf of churches whoever else might be, uh, be injured. They're all in South Carolina, because wherever they've been filed throughout the nation, they have this, this federal court procedure called multi-district litigation. Where all litigations that bring up the same issues and are against the same parties are all brought before one judge. So there's one judge in South Carolina is handling all the PFAS cases nationwide.
All right, if you don't mind, I, I think, I think we know what direction to go. Do we actually have to take action? So basically, you need a vote to actually not to, uh, pull this, I think, is this, I mean, we take them actually, we're not going to pull out of it. I'm fine either way. Just to kind of, it seems like we're on the same page here.
No, we have to actually file a, a claim to have this happen. So I, I would like to make a motion that we, we proceed to file a claim.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, so I have a question before we vote. Um, does that mean if we're going to submit a claim, we have to start, uh, uh, documenting the magnitude of the claim, or can we file a claim and then?
No, this is, this is your shot. Like there's an estimate of two hundred thousand, so I, I'm hoping and praying that somebody, Tom Trainer or Sean Colleen or somebody has talked to a vendor. And the vendor says, I can fix these wells for two hundred thousand dollars, so that we actually have something.
Well, that's why I'm asking, do we need to authorize some money to go with this? If we need to quantify the magnitude of the claim? In other words, we have to have IA COM or whoever it is come in and help us quantify uh, what the claim needs to be.
So we have gotten some preliminary estimates, in, in particular for the town campus wells, uh, half and half specific our vendors for specific cost estimates for Pine Hill. Um, elementary, so you know, we can do that. We're not paying them for that expertise and it's their
Okay.
Expertise, you know, their, their general experience and what it may cost. We do have a capital budget request up for town meeting to do a, a more specific design, to hire a consultant to do a design of the actual treatment. And certainly, that process is going to, you know, really give a much more refined number than we'd be able to be able to get now.
All right.
We do have numbers now, and they're only going to get better as, as we move forward. So.
I just want to make sure we didn't pass a lame motion that didn't have any funding to implement it.
What was the deadline for filing a claim?
It, it, there's several deadlines. I don't remember, but there, there, there's several deadlines along in, in the next several months. And once you file, there's other additional information you can follow up with. So it, it appears to me that if we do fund in the spring to get a consultant to help do our actual design, we'll be able to utilize their expertise to inform our claim in, in the future.
Okay, that's good. Uh Marion, you had your hand up.
Oh, right. I just wanted to verify that when you get estimates from vendors to, uh, install the filters or whatever. Uh, is there any mechanism whereby one can estimate the ongoing cost into the future? I mean, these filters need maintenance, they need changing. Is that included in the, um, in the estimate?
Yeah, we asked for the, the expected O and M costs as well, because yeah, the whitewater, the vendor that we currently use to maintain the water, uh, public water systems, you know, they're adding this treatment adds to the, their annual maintenance. So yes, it, it will be, going forward, it will be a budget item that we'll need to accommodate for in the town's operating budget. And in the case of, uh, Leland and, um, Elder Housing as well, and, and their, their revenue expense.
And we can include that in the claim in this class action claim. Okay.
All right, excellent. So we have a motion in a second, so let's vote now, I think. So Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Hi, I'm just looking for the date to file the claims, but.
I am I as well, and you can sub, submit the date when.
All right.
And update us. So I think we'll go on. Uh, we have a pretty easy one, I think, which is the town calendar, uh, which is the town meeting on the twenty-third of April with a backup night on the twenty-fifth?
Move to do that.
Is your second?
Second.
Jackie, do you need anything else? We'll just vote on that.
No, I'm all set, and, um, we actually already have, um, uh, confirmation from the high school that those dates are available. I've already booked them, just in case you guys, I just wanted to get that in and, you know, before, just in case.
At one point, didn't we have to go to like the gym if we went to the second night? These are both at Lindquist?
Sorry about that. That was last, that was last year.
All right, so these are both be at Lindquist if we need two nights.
Yes, absolutely, yes, and it's already confirmed.
So we have a motion. Did it get, I think Eric made the motion. Was there a second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Oh.
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you. Uh, and Jeremy, are you going to talk about select board reviews? I have a few points to make too, but, uh, I'm not sure who's, are you going to kick this one off?
Uh, yeah, just, I guess, just to get your update you on where we're at with the budget submissions and, and the discussions that we've been having with the advisory committee on, on, um, you know, sort of the, a budget process that we're going to be using this year and that we've already started to implement. Uh, so over the last month or so, um, Diane, Deb and I have all been meeting with the various budget makers and, and kind of pre-screening, if you will, and reviewing with them their budget submissions. And are we now working to compile an overall holistic budget? So you can, you know, from the start, um, the select board and advisory will be able to see a, a budget roll up of how all, everything fits together, like right from the start of your discussions on the budget. Um, I'm wrapping up a, a summary of that current roll up and, and hope to have that published um, by the thirty-first, by Sunday. Uh, hopefully, we get it done before the weekend, but I might spend a little time. I'm not happy with my, my verbiage, uh, over the weekend, but we'll get that sent out, uh, by Sunday afternoon to, to all with a budget summary, including revenues and expenditures. Uh, potential monetary items at town meeting. You know, the, the whole budget picture, uh, on both sides, like a, more, more of a balance sheet type budget than just an expense budget, which I think will be helpful for everyone. Um, and along with that, some background information as far as the town's financial indicators and, and kind of current status on, on, on different items, stabilization, free cash, that sort of thing. Will also be included in, in the draft budget submission. Um, and the, the hope is, in talking with Dan Sickle, is that we'll be able to make, um, the advisory meetings a bit more efficient, and they can focus on things that they'd like to talk to and not necessarily them an issue of, of some of the department budgets, the smaller ones that, that may have fallen in with, um, in line with advisory guidance. Uh, they can focus on, on other things and policy issues, um, to, to spend their time. Um, and a, again, hopefully, it will help the select board and that, in your review of the budgets as well. You'll get more information upfront. But I'd like to get a sense on how the, the select board would like to do your budget review. You know, traditionally, you've sat on a Saturday morning and, and gone through every, every budget. Uh, currently as proposed, it's, 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 it's one of the nights during the week um, that we, we give you a summary budget update. Um, but happy to, you know, work at the board's pleasure on how you'd like to hear at the, the various time budgets.
Yeah, I think I'll add some input and we'll see how the other select board members. I differentiate the bud, differentiate the budgets in two categories, well, really sort of four, but two. One is the select board, the budgets that report to the select board, mainly DPW, police and fire. So I feel that the select board should review them before advisory does, because they actually report to us. So I, I feel that there should be, timing wise, a chance for us to, uh, help them form their budget. And, and I know the advisory has, um, in addition to the public hearing, they have meetings, uh, uh, having been on advisory for six years, meetings with individual budget departments over the course of January and February. So it seems like the ones that were, we report to us, we should uh, work with them more closely to, to make sure that it reflects our direction as well on those budgets. So ti, I'm not sure what the timing of that is, whether we consider a Saturday or, or several evenings. And then I would also like to see the select board review the other budgets before the advisory public hearing. So I, I don't like the idea of going to the public hearing and us not having had a chance to meet with the individual budget makers. I mean, some of them are pretty small budgets, but even so, I think it's useful for us to, uh, understand it before the advisory public hearing, partly because then it sort of makes the advisory public hearing run more efficiently. We're not seeing things for the first times there. So my personal view is that, uh, the Saturday meeting was kind of a good session if people are willing to do it, because it forced us to focus and we dedicated admittedly a big chunk of time, but we got it over with in one Saturday instead of multiple nights. Um, so I, I would, uh, just provide that as input, and let's just see what the other select board members think. Does anybody have any, who wants to go first, Paul?
So there's a doctrine called separation of powers, where you have an executive branch, you have a judicial branch, you have a legislative branch. Advisory is essentially a committee of the legislature. And we are, along with the town administrator, the, the head of the executive branch. And the, the way the process works best is for the executive branch of government to decide on the policy direction for the governmental unit. And then present it to the legislature, and then have the legislature and the legislative committee, whether it's a congressional committee or, or like House Ways and Means, to have the, that legislative committee then evaluate what the government executive branch wants to do. So if, for example, we want to spend a million dollars on, on tree removal, that we feel, okay, given the last storm, we need to do a lot of tree removal, so let's spend a million dollars. That should be coming from the executive branch and proposed to the legislative branch for them to react.
Yes.
Uh, I'm just using that as a hypothetical. I don't want to get into a debate about, about that issue. So I'm not advocating anything. I'm just trying to use that as, as an example. So the idea is, we're supposed to be leading this debate, and so what you're proposing makes exact sense, that we meet with the department heads, hear what they, their needs are, what initiatives they feel need to be done. And then we, as the executive branch, decide what it is that we want consistent with whatever goals we decide for the community.
Yep.
And then present it, not just as, 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 as some random department head coming up with an idea for advisory to evaluate, but rather the executive branch of government is saying, we want to get this done.
Yep. One, one thing I'm going to evoke my George moral, moral interpretation, which he feels that we also need to look at them in aggregate too, because we don't necessarily know what we can afford as well. So that if we decide that we should give this to this department, that may mean that some other department has to not get everything they ask for or whatever. If there's some aggregate bottom line that were, you know, all those graphs that, uh, Dan has created that depress everyone when they see them. Um, you know, that, that, that we also need to, George always brought this up to, to talk about them in aggregate. So there, there may be trade-offs. We may want five things, but maybe only can afford three. And so we can't view each department in a vacuum because of that, I think. Stephen has even more advisory experience than I do, I think. Steven has even more advisory experience than I do, I think. I was never chair, so lay it on us, Steven.
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess I I might have a different perspective on the strategy this year. I I think a lot of what we've been saying is. A sort of like discussions that you guys have had in previous years and what George was saying and, you know, what Paul was, I mean, I've. I've heard, I've heard all of those comments um, said in the past, so when I was watching your meetings. Um, I I think that one of the goals that I had for Jeremy, and I think we discussed this um, a year ago. When um, he started and I was still on advisory with Dan. Was uh, to have the town administrator more take over that role of um. Overseeing the departments that fall under the select board. Um, sorry, um, so. I I I think that, yes, I think it's good for us to have an idea of what all of our departments want to do. And it's good to have a big picture view of the town's budget and to see how that all fits in. But to some degree, I think that um, I am willing to hand over a good portion of that responsibility to Jeremy. Because I think that's part of the reason why we hired him. Um, and I think that it it's something that he excels at and it's something that he has a great deal of interest in. Um, I would be, I would be interested to see how it would go if. We had a meeting that was led by Jeremy, where Jeremy, I I think that that process of. Us meeting with the department heads and figuring out uh, policy wise, what we want them to do. That's all stuff that we as the select board should have done in the, in the past two months. As the budget makers were developing their budgets. They're about to turn their their budgets in in three days. It's too late for us to tell them what we want them to do. Their their budget's already set. Luckily, we have Jeremy who has been already doing all that. He's been meeting with all the department heads. He's been working on their budgets. He's been discussing with advisory. He understands what the town's budget is. He understands what advisory's guidance is. I think that. He is probably um, you know, incorporating all that into his um, decision making with all of the budget makers that fall under him. Um, so in instead of us trying to do everything like we have in the past and meet with every uh, department head. Or doing a big Saturday thing, um, and I I I would want to hear what Jeremy uh, thinks about this also, but like. I just want to hear from Jeremy. I want to see all of the budgets that he worked with, with all the department heads. Maybe, maybe Jeremy wants to have the department heads there with him, um, but but mostly I want this to be something. Um, that is owned by him and that um, he presents to us and then. We may have some feedback on it, but mostly just to get our steel of approval and then that goes off to advisory. Um, that's kind of the model that I envision um, for how we handle the budget this year.
Hmm, okay, let's see how others think. That's contrary to my, my view.
My next.
Eric, you're next, yeah.
I I I agree with Steven, because I honestly, that is how um, other municipalities work and how I'm used to it uh, being done. It uh, Sherman has always been flat and always been very um, uh, what do you call it, different um. Different aisle cylinders, whatever it is, and um, I think we finally have someone here that I think can can pull it together, particularly those that fall under the select board. Jeremy, the highest executive authority under the select board, to have the different departments of the select board submit their own little thing and have us look at it. And I remember in the past, it's just like shoved to us and whatever else. No, that's why we have someone with an MBA right in that position. Well, I think it's very effective. I'd like to see him actually um, start pulling it together and can actually give us a summary of it as well. So I would actually like to see is one, as Steven indicated, that there's um. That Jeremy take um, take a kind of a good summary of kind of a stronger role than town administrators in the past have done. And two, um, have it kind of come to us all at once and then at our, yeah, I don't know, bear our next meeting, what's our next meeting, the eleventh, I think, or something like that. Or whenever it is, and look at it and then kind of make a decision, okay. This department is asking for a boatload more money. Do we handle them separate? Do we handle the other ones like throughout the evening? You know what I mean? Um, to some degree, I I agree with Paul where, you know, the select board has us and our departments have a budget. We propose that to what he calls exactly advisory, he calls the legislative branch, but yet I um. What is it? I would like to take a look at it before I make any hard decisions how we're gonna approach it. If every single apartment comes in. Flat even or even reduced, and I don't think we have that much to discuss. I really don't, you know what I mean? We're gonna look at it, you know, more obligatory, but if a lot are increasing, a lot's going up there. I think we're gonna have some lengthy discussions and um, so I would actually like to just kind of get a dump of the budget. Uh, the, again, just as a follow up to select board, just get a dump out of it. And uh, then we can kind of make a good discussion of it next time, and I think Jeremy can make a great summary of it. And I I doubly support Jeremy working with the departments. I mean, I think um. You know, my goal, I mean, we can vote on a goal if you want. My goal is to stay within a two and a half limit, pure and simple, you know what I mean? I do not support, I will not support an override under any circumstances. Um, I shouldn't say under any circumstances, it's an absolute, but I imagine in a circumstance we would all support an override. So I'd like to, I think Jeremy's the one person to pull that big picture together versus, you know, getting one from this department, that department, or this department. And all us volunteers meet together and just, you know, talk about it for a good hour and a half and get nothing done. Um, I'd much rather someone who's a professional and um, is working day to day with these groups, uh, pulled together for us. So I support what Steven says, and I'd like to see by the next meeting, just a dump of um, what's been out there and what's being proposed by the departments.
I guess the only thing I would say is that part of the reason for us reviewing with the each individual department has. So we understand what their issues are. Jeremy may have, I agree that Jeremy can help assemble it. But I still feel strongly we should meet with every budget maker. And understand the issues they're confronting, not just this year, but perhaps things they have in mind down the road. So it's not a matter of just approving a number that was submitted, it's understanding what challenges that department is facing. As a.
I agree with you, to a degree, like, let's say a bunch coming flat. You know, like we have the um, cemetery commissioner, that's a good example, actually. We have the veterans come before us. And they're like five thousand dollars. We don't need them to come before us. You know what I'm trying to say? We're gonna say, okay, Joe, that's fine, five thousand.
We need to be uh, aware of what they're doing and 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 I think they need to have some airtime with us, to be honest with you. But Marion, your hands up.
Uh, yeah, I I mean, I agree, I agree with the last thing you said, Jeff, they need. We need to have some airtime with them. We need to have that contact. We need to understand what they're up to, but I also. Feel, uh, you know, I'm I'm a select board member that has never been on advisory, so I'm not as. Agile as you guys are in in tripping around the budget and understanding the big picture. And uh, I really uh, would appreciate. A, a global view. I mean, I agree with, uh, I think, I don't know if it was Steve or Eric said it. It's, it's kind of too late for us to put together a global view, uh, and. We don't put in the, you know, eight hours a day. Seven days a week, or I was gonna say seven to five, but I extended it to seven because Jeremy's been working his head off. Um, we, we don't, we haven't put in the time on this and we don't have time to put in the time on this. Uh, on the other hand, we do, we do want to have. A clear view of what the departments want, but I, I really would appreciate. Jeremy taking over, presenting us with the big picture, what the balances are. Among the various departments, what our limitations are, what our big picture decisions are. Um, and so I really like Steven's uh, suggestion. I like that. Uh, the way of approaching it a lot, and if along the way we can hear from all the department heads, that's great too. But I would say both uh, would be useful, but it would really be good if Jeremy had a handle on the whole thing. And could sort out the balancing act that we have. If if there are tensions in the budget. We need to see that big picture, not hear from this department, that department, and then figure out, oh, there's. There's a tension here. It's not gonna work. Um, I think Jeremy is able to do that and would really be helpful if he did.
Yeah, I think it's a question of degree, I guess I'd say. Um, first of all, these budgets are not final. These are proposed budgets. The way I look at it, and they all the way through the advisory public hearing, they always change. Um, so they're not cast in stone. And so there are going to be things we need to consider in there. Um, so I I think that we need to not show up at the advisory hearing. And be surprised and not understand some of the issues. So whether it's a question of Jeremy presenting us with those issues. I think there probably are some bigger departments that we should be meeting with individually, in addition to getting a brief from Jeremy. So I, I would characterize our disagreement tonight as a question of degree. So uh, Steven, your hands up.
Um, yeah, I guess Jeff, just to address some of your um, concerns, um, you know, I I don't think that. I don't think that, I agree with you that we need to have an understanding of the sort of drivers of the budgets. Of the departments that are under us and certainly also a view to um, things that they anticipate in the near future. Um, I think that is important, but I also feel like um, delegating the sort of uh, uh, information discovery. Phase of that to Jeremy is is fine. And, you know, I think that those are, you know, it's not like we aren't going to each individually get the budgets that they submit. We're gonna get all of the budgets, just like we did on advisory and we have an opportunity to look through it. I don't know that we need to have a uh, open meeting session with every single department head. And go through their budgets line by line, the way that we did in advisory. I don't, I don't think that that level of granularity is necessary for all of the budgets. I think that if we have any questions and concerns, we ideally should be able to address those to Jeremy. And then Jeremy would have an answer for, oh, this is the reason why um, the police, um, you know. Uh, consulting line has to go up by fifty thousand dollars, uh, because there's, you know, a new mandate, blah, blah, blah. You know, and and I think that if, if there is more detail that is needed, I think that, you know, in the meeting where Jeremy essentially presents the budget to us. If he has the police chief and the fire chief and the DPW director and some of the other, I mean, I think I would leave it up to him. Uh, which other, you know, maybe a a smaller budget suddenly has a thirty percent increase year over year. Like, that's gonna need some explanation, so Jeremy could probably ask that um, department head also to be there so that. They could still answer those questions that we might have in the meeting, but I think the point being. Instead of making it an all-day meeting where we go through every single budget. Or breaking it out into four or five different meetings in order to get, for everybody to get some face time. If we could try to compress that into one meeting with Jeremy and a bunch of department heads, an evening meeting. Or maybe two evening meetings, you know, with Jeremy and the department heads. I I think that. That would make our process a lot more efficient. Um, I think there is a certain level of trust in delegating that. Uh, sort of budget oversight authority to Jeremy. I mean, again, we're still gonna get the budget, so if you feel like you see something that Jeremy may have missed, we can still bring it up to him. It's just, I just, having gone through the advisory process for six years. I don't, I don't feel the need for the select board to go through that process um, every year for all of our budgets. That's just uh.
Well, it sounds like I'm in the minority then, because I don't agree with that.
Yeah, if I can jump in, and I think we are at just levels of disagreement, like you said. In general, since I've been on the select board, I have found us, the board itself surprisingly micromanaging on these small, on a lot of these budgets. And the town administrator surprisingly moved, and um, I'm, and we have a brand new town administrator now who I believe has a very high skill set. And a very good organization with this stuff. Doesn't have to, you know, if we see something, of course, just like we used to do in the, where I work. Of course, the different departments come before you. Of course, the different departments discuss things, whatever else. But the the town administrator, and it's kind of a fresh out, will be more involved, will have a bigger picture, will understand. Why someone needs more money, whatever, can answer questions directly, not defer all the questions just to whomever and delegating everything. And can actually help pull together, so can actually say to one department, you know, you should cut this a little bit, because you know, the select board thinks this other thing over here is more important. Otherwise, each department is kind of on their own, almost like, I don't know. It's almost like a battle royale, you know, it doesn't, it's always felt weird to me. I've always felt this board has been very, very micromanaging with these individual budgets and looking at them all. And I would love to see something a bit more consolidated under what I consider um, a town administrator that can actually, that can handle that. I mean, in the past, we'd ask questions and it would always get deferred. The previous time, I said, sorry, I don't want to beat up on that, but. Just, you know, could never answer a question of why one is higher and everything else. Oh, yeah, gotta talk to someone.
I understand all that and I buy the need to be efficient and the, and I think Jeremy is certainly capable of, but but I would rather. I don't need to review like tiny budgets, but the major budgets, I my preference seems to be different from everyone else's. I would, I would sit down with the police chief, with the DPW director, with the fire chief, with the school committee. All the major budgets, I think we should be actively involved in reviewing before the advisory public hearing. Yes, Jeremy, I have already asked him a lot of questions, but I want them to have some face time with us and to, for us to have some face time with them. To raise our individual questions. So if I'm in the minority, then we won't do that. That's okay. That's fine with me. I got found time.
I think we all want to do that, but it's not to the degree that we used to do it. The degree we used to do it, I I think I felt. Was excessive, I did, and I and I want greater involvement, and the degree to which the town administrators before were uninvolved. I thought that was unacceptable. Maybe that's where I should go a bit more. Yes, the police chief is gonna be before us. Yes, Sean's gonna come before us. Of course they are. But it's not gonna be like in the absence of a town administrator, like I think it has been in the past.
Obviously not. That's not what we want, but I I don't think it should be the absence of us either.
Uh, Jeremy.
Yeah, I'd like to just offer maybe just a hybrid approach. I mean, not one extreme or the other, but. Uh, maybe the, you know, combining sort of the the benefits of both. I believe I'm, I would be ready for your next meeting, January eleventh, to give you a high level summary of the of the budget and. How it all rolls up. Um, you know, I've got a feel for how it is right now, uh, and right now I'm comfortable to say it's, it's not. It's not an override territory, but there are concerns going forward. I think your budget for FY twenty-six is gonna be much more difficult than FY twenty-five. And those are the things I'd like to sort of bring to your attention, so that the town can start planning now in this budget cycle and not. Uh, you know, defer that, that issue, but um, on the January eleventh, I could give you a high level overview. You could, you know, see that information and then we could follow up after that. Um, and see what your, your desire is for having wards or or departments come before you. Certainly, the the larger departments that that have a story to tell will will, I would want them to, to help tell that story, so. Um, in any approach, I would, I would be including them anyway, but um. You don't necessarily may have to take any action tonight, other than, yeah, hey, Jeremy, come back on the eleventh with that high level summary and. And then we could talk about what what next steps to take on your budget review.
Marion had her hand up first, Paul.
Yeah, fastest hand in the West. Um, I, I. Personally, I would very much approach, I would very much appreciate. Uh, your approach, Jeremy, of a hi- high level overview. At our next meeting, that would, that would really set me up for understanding the individual budgets if we have to hear any individual budget. Um, so I would appreciate that and I would vote for it.
Uh, so Paul, I think you're next.
Yes, uh. For Jeremy, uh, in my other towns, the town administrators and town managers. Have already reported to the boards. What the uh, shortfall is in the requests and in the budget picture. So like one town was saying, their budget was out of balance by one point six million. That's the starting number. That's something that I, I hope that you would include in any report. What are the requests total and how do they compare with the revenues and so we know. What we have to deal with or what, what the advisory committee has to deal with and what the voters have to deal with. The other thing that I've suggested for years is that all my other towns. Figure out what the number is for the schools. And they tell the schools in a memo, here's how much money you're gonna have for the upcoming year. Figure out how you want to spend it. And their budget process starts with the information from the town as to what funds are available. And that. There are various formulas by which you get to that, but in the past, we just let the schools figure out. On their own, whatever they want, and they come to us and they tell us what. Their proposed budget is. It's better to kind of be involved in that process from the beginning by figuring out. Now, here's the dollars I have this year, how much of an increase. Is, is built into that with the, the two and a half that you're allowed every year with new growth and everything else, figure out. Alright, here's, here's the number that. All right, here's, here's the number that the schools are being allocated upfront.
Yeah, that, that, there's a problem with that though, Paul, is most of the strange things or unusual costs in the school are in sped. And so they may have an out of district student that's costing them five hundred thousand dollars a year. So I don't think that we can really do that for the schools, uh, when you consider the um, sped costs can be somewhat unpredictable. If they get someone that has to be out of district or someone moves into town that was a sped student that wasn't previously living in town or something. So there are, it's hard, the school's a little bit harder, I think, to do that. But, but that's well taken. I think it's uh, good that we have an idea what the guidance should be. Um, Sean. Get it, get us down off the high wire act here.
All right. So you've probably noticed that I've been silent for like two and a half hours on this meeting. And I hesitate to say anything, but I have to. Because I, one, as while my two counterparts aren't here, um, as the other major budget makers under Jeremy, but I, I, I want to say a couple of things. One, I, even when I was on the board, I was begging for the select board to get out ahead of advisory. There was always a column on the budget that had TA recommendation that never had a recommendation. And it's important that the TA support, both support the budget and push it to the select board. And the select board, I've always thought should support their own budgets before advisory votes on them. It's, it's fine if you want to look at the whole town budget, but to think that the, you can't make a decision on the police department's operations because you don't know what the superintendent of the schools is going to do, I've always been against. You need to advocate for your own budgets. And secondly, and then I'll stop. I more than welcome Jeremy presenting our budgets and I can stay for the other two safely. It'll be a cold day in hell before he presents our budgets and we're not sitting at least quietly in the audience to help. If he's presenting our budgets, unless there's some reason I can't be there, I'm going to be there, but I, I, I welcome him presenting it as, as a whole package. And I think it's a great way to transition this.
Well said. Thank you.
And, and for what it's worth, I can't, I can't say that Dan is definitely uh, continuing this, but when I was chair, I definitely tried to put the uh, large um, select board budgets later in the budget uh, um, process for advisory to give the select board um, an opportunity to do that um, early, you know, in January, February. So essentially, we tried to put police DBW and fire in the late February, early March timeframe. Um, so, I mean, again, I think that if the, if, if all the, the, the department heads are reasonably comfortable that Jeremy has an understanding of their budgets and has been working with them on it and has an understanding of advisory um, guidance. Um, I think that on January eleventh, we should probably be getting a pretty solid overview of um, where our budgets are at. And it will become clear where greater uh, detail and uh, information would be necessary. So, I mean, I, I, I would advocate that, that we just kind of start with January eleventh, having Jeremy present all of the select board budgets um, and provide an overview um, of, of the overall town budget and, and how it all stands. And then, and then we can discuss from there. Um, also just to briefly address Paul's point about the schools. I mean, obviously, it, the, the, the schools here are their own legal entity and it's regionalized with Dover. So um, it's, it's rather challenging for the town to just say, okay, schools, this is what we have allocated to you for your budget. It's just, it's just not, it's just not how the budget works in our town. And uh, given the number of people who come here specifically for the schools, and I know Dover has this issue also, it's it's, it's rather challenging um, for the towns to just say, no, schools, you can't have all this money. Uh, you have to do what we tell you. Um, it's just, it's just not historically how things work. Um, at least not, not in the, the six years that I was on advisory. Um, so, so that, that ends up being a lot of the challenge with the, we need to know the big picture and uh, you know, don't want to have an override. A, a lot of what ends up deciding whether or not there's going to be an override is, is actually the school's budget and how much it's going over and/or um, is Dawn able to reel it back in um, by the end of the budget season.
Yeah, there, what are they, sixty nine percent of the budget or something, operating budget?
Yeah, it's big. And their, and their, their, their uh, version one budget is, it's a significant uh, uh, significantly higher than last year's budget.
All right, we're once again in vital agreement, as I always say. So are people, uh, it seems like the consensus that nobody's in favor of a Saturday meeting. You want to just, we'll have the January eleventh meeting where we get kind of a high level input from Jeremy. Do people prefer to just have subsequent evening meetings with however many we can fit in each night? Or do you want to do a one shot uh, Saturday to?
I like the Saturday.
I want to, I want to decide on the eleventh. I want to see what the budget looks like, then decide.
Okay, that's good. I like that.
I will look over you from Jeremy. We can actually look at it. I mean, if everything's all under and this and that, whatever else, do it in one night or something, you know what I mean? But I, I want, I want to decide on the eleventh. That was kind of my whole point with it.
That makes sense. I think that's a good point.
Yeah, and I would ideally probably, you know, invite the, the uh, the police, fire and DPW directors to that meeting. And then any other ones, Jeremy, that you think um, are apropos based on their budgets. Um, and, you know, obviously that might mean that we end up needing to, to meet with those uh, department heads a few times. But I, I think they're probably accustomed to that um, during this budget um, season, so.
When you say that meeting, I'm interrupting you, but you mean the meeting on the eleventh?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I don't, I don't imagine that that is just going to be a very cursory overview. I feel like I, I would like Jeremy to, 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 to give us, you know, a pretty solid summary of everything that's going on in the budget, uh, which, which it sounds like he's ready to do.
Okay.
And highlight the obvious spikes and stuff like that.
I think we're good then. Any other comments on the budget process?
I think the only other comment, and this is probably Jeremy, um, kind of for you to pursue, would be, I know it's always challenging to get the first version of the budget model from the finance director uh, early because, you know, the budgets have all only just come in and she's probably missing a lot of additional data from the schools and whatnot. But um, if there is any way that we can get sort of version one of that budget model, the one that she distributes to advisory, I assume that select board would get copies of that as well, but if, if there is a way to get that um, sort of early in the budget cycle, um, that would be good. Because again, that, that I think provides the overall town budget overview that, that, that we're looking for. That's, that's, I was always confused about George's um, insistence on seeing uh, all, all the budgets and seeing how it all fits in before making a decision. Because number one, all the budgets are submitted on January first. And then if you have the budget model overview, you have it. You don't, you don't need to talk to each individual budget uh, maker in order to have the overview. Um, but we do need that budget model.
Yeah, and uh, you'll be pleased to know that I, we have a budget model already prepared, ready.
And so one final clarifying point, are, when we say we're going to do this on the eleventh, are we doing the capital budget at the same time or just the operating budget?
It suggests just the, the, uh, just the operating budget, if that's what you'd want to talk about.
That's fine, but probably the capital is going to be more complicated, would be my suggestion.
With a, with a, a couple of the projects in, in particular, yeah.
All right.
The, the budget model is already, is already populated. Um, and that's why I could say tonight that we're not in override territory, but the excess levy capacity is dropping, is getting small. So next budget cycle is going to be even more difficult. So anyway, we can get into a much more detail in the next meeting.
But then if that's the case, maybe we should, two weeks after that, whatever it is, the twenty fifth or whatever, do the capital. You know, maybe we should see the capital in our next formal meeting, at a high level anyway, just to know. Not all the deep, not every dump truck, but you know, like if we're putting a new roof on Pine Hill or anything, that's a pretty big deal.
That's good.
All right.
Just like, just make a suggestion about um, the special education.
Yeah.
For the budget.
Yes.
So most towns have a stabilization account for special education. And that's where that.
Pine Hill has one.
Yeah, we dipped into that uh, stabilization fund last year.
Yeah, that's where you deal with stabilization. That's why you can, you can give it a budget number to the community because.
Yeah, I know that's true, but they can have some pretty wild swings if they get a large number of sped students.
Yes, but why put that in the budget with, for an unknown contingency?
Well, like for example, last year, last year was an unexpected uh, spike, but
Yeah.
This year it's known and it's, it's expected. So you budget for it, right? I mean, the idea of the stabilization fund is that it, it is supposed to be for unknown things. You know, so it's, it's sort of like with the trees. It's like, well, there was the one year when we had to go into the stabilization fund for, for the trees. But moving forward, it's like, well, you kind of know that, that what the condition of the trees is. And so, you know, Sean has had to, to make a plan for how to deal with the trees. And um, so, some of it comes out of uh, stabilization funds, but, but a lot of it is, is really, it's budgeted because you just.
Well, I guess I would argue it's all budgeted. In other words, the only way the funds got into stabilization fund is in a given year, we allocated an expense to populate the reserve.
That's true.
Oh, so it's the same thing as the, uh, you know, OPEB or whatever else. We're deciding in this year's tax base, we're going to dedicate certain amount of resources to adding money to the stabilization fund or to the OPEB trust fund or whatever it is. So it is, it's still an expense.
Yeah.
It's just levelizes, it allows you to levelize the expenses a little better that way between um, swing years. All right. So um, select board reports, I don't have a select board report. Does anyone have a, anything they want to um, bring up under select board reports?
Uh, yeah, actually I do.
Go ahead, Marion.
My hand up. Uh, the open space committee has been working hard, really getting serious about the open space and recreation plan. Um, we uh, realized that uh, we're going to have to pay for the final editing and putting together of the, of the open space plan in fiscal year two thousand twenty five, starts next July. And uh, this is sort of almost a personal question. We don't know exactly into what budget uh, we should uh, make that request. Is it select board? Or we don't have a separate uh, normally don't have a separate budget at all. We're just one of those committees that does their work on, on a shoestring. So.
How did you fund it the last time? Are you, you, this is an update of the prior open space plan, right? So how, how did you fund it last time?
Um, you know, I honestly don't remember. I think we asked for money from the select board.
I'm thinking a cookie sale myself.
No, no cookies. We're not baking cookies after all this.
Marion, what's the order of magnitude?
It's pretty small. I mean, I think it won't be more than about seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, the reserve fund, I think, can handle that.
Okay, great. So just so you know, that's underway.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm slipping it in the select board report.
They usually put three hundred thousand in the reserve fund. I'm not sure if that's what they're doing this year.
Okay, I, I just get concerned if a lot of people say, oh, I just want a little bit from the reserve fund before we know it, everybody is.
Well, you can go, we'll let you go on the January eleventh to this foundation meeting and maybe you could request funds there too.
Why don't we have a booth, Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, Board of Selectmen.
Donations here.
Donate here.
I knew you'd laugh at me when I brought this up, but.
No, it's a good point, Marion. It was actually, I'm glad you mentioned it because I didn't know you were updating it. So for that reason, I'm, I, I'm glad to, to.
Yeah, and it's due at the state in twenty twenty five.
Okay.
So we're hoping to submit it in about um, fifteen months' time, but there is quite a lot of work to do so. And it needs, every update, you know, it needs to be re-edited for publication.
Yeah, yeah, I remember. It's a big deal. All right, um, any other select board reports? Hearing none, uh, town administrator, Jeremy.
Sure, yeah, just a handful for you. Um, uh, Paul stole my thunder a little bit earlier in the meeting when he uh, offered thanks to all the, the folks involved with the storm uh, recovery. Want to echo that. It was a, it was a pleasure to work with. Um, and I think folks don't, um, fully understand all the effort that's behind the scenes that, that Sean and uh, Chief War, Chief Galvin and, and all of their staff put into, uh, you know, during the storm and the responses and, you know, the recovery afterwards. So um, I, I think um, I'm really pleased with the way the team and everybody, everybody uh, came together during the storm and afterwards. So I just want to express my, my thanks to, to everyone that helped support that. And just a, a few updates uh, for the, for the board. Uh, we've had some recent meetings with the cemetery commission, talking about how uh, we can offer them some, some additional administrative support, help them update their records and files. Um, and how we are, are going to work towards having public works help with some of the, the duties there at the, the cemetery commission and, and at Pine Hill Cemetery. So some great discussions there and a lot of great collaboration, um, but, and some more to come. Also been having a fair amount of discussions with uh, members of and the group itself, the sustainability and energy and sustainability committee regarding the sustainability coordinator position and how uh, you know, we can uh, improve upon that and, and what we might bring forward as, as a joint proposal uh, to be included in the FY twenty five budget and, and how we're going to fill the gaps, you know, in, in the interim. Capital, the capital budget committee has met several times. They actually did approve the fire department capital request and the public works capital requests. Um, and they have some meetings coming up in January, uh, and, you know, we'd be happy to, to present to the select board. Um, and uh, I guess later in January, you're, you're two meetings out. Regarding that, the TIP design grant to the, the application of the Boston MPO, uh, there was interest in support from the town Holliston in um, supporting our, each other's applications. So just wanted to relay the town of Holl, uh, Holliston is, is supportive of Sherburne's request. Um, and I'm presuming we are likewise. Um, it would help with the scoring uh, before the Boston MPO. Um, really no strings attached to that, other than there's mutual support along the same corridor, Route sixteen. Uh, update on the special legislation that has been filed. I believe the, the sewer district legislation has been uh, referred to the um, the uh, Secretary of State's office. I guess that's the protocol. Uh, and the um, special legislation to combine the treasurer collector has been referred to the joint committee on municipalities and regional government. They've actually asked a couple of questions that we've answered. Uh, so they're well into their, their view at that joint committee. Um, and then finally, um, we've gained another uh, conference room at town hall. So with sort of the interim combining of treasurer's collector's office, Heidi has moved downstairs as the town planner. Her office on the first floor here has been returned to a small conference room. So that's available for anyone's use. Um, table in there. There's actually a workstation on a computer that somebody can utilize if they want to, but feel free to, to utilize that um, for, for any meetings you may have.
Yeah, that's a great space. I like that. I was going to add one thing. We all got it, I think. Um, uh, sustainability, we also got the community choice aggregation plan approved now. I think people probably saw that in the email, but we can, I assume, start launching.
We're all excited about that. The uh, Energy and Sustainability Committee is cheering after three, three or more years worth of work. So lots of, you know, diligence went into that, but it's, it's great that it's been approved and that in the new year, we can start to implement. We'll do, go out to bid and there'll be some policy decisions that will come before the select board in regards to that. Um, so we'll, we'll work with the Energy and Sustainability Committee to bring now those, those policy decisions forward.
I had a question about that.
Go ahead, Paul.
So the plan that was approved originally was disapproved because of the uh, issue of the existing discounts. And so I'm wondering what happens to those people who have discounts from ever source under the new plan. The new thing that was approved. Like, I, I didn't see how it was dealt with there. It looked like it was approving it because we withdrew the portion of the plan that said that there could be different rates for customers. And the the implication may be that we withdrew any support for discounts and that. And there 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 are, there are some of us who have discounts. And we don't want to lose that.
Yep. I I'm sorry, Paul, I don't have the answer, but I can get it for you. I'll I'll ask our consultant how that. How that played out. And I can get you that information.
Okay, thanks.
And one other final note, the uh solar panels look great on the firehouse.
Yep, hopefully we'll get ever source to come within the next month or so. Who would with the meter? That's the last.
Part of a meter, yeah, part of a net metering agreement with the DPW and other.
Uh, yeah, through at the at the station itself, yes, it's about fifty percent of the power consumption of the fire station.
Yeah.
Um, so there there may be times where it would feed back into the grid, but generally, it's all consumed right there. But there is now, you know, everything's been approved, it's been installed, it's been inspected. It's all good to go, but the final step is to get the the meter in place by ever sources. There's just a delay with the, you know, electric company and that, it's just. It is. So hopefully in a month, we'll actually be generating solar power.
Great. Well, Paul, your expertise is always presenting the motion for the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Excellent, as always, is there a second?
Second.
Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
I am I as well, so I think we reached a good conclusion to the year. I I want to take a chance just to thank everyone for all that you've done. For the town this year collectively and individually. And wish you a happy new year.
And same back to you, but I have my best motion now.
Alright.
My best motion is. Move to adjourn.
Alright. Anyone second that one?
Second.
Alright, Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
I am I as well, and Jeremy, Diane, thank you both also too for all that you've done to. Keep us on the straight and narrow, even when we were not aware that we were astray. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Alright. Ciao, guys.
Have a good new year.